I'm going to go ahead and call the, call to order the reorganization meeting of the St. Genevieve R2 School Board. Typically, the superintendent presides over this with the assistance from the Secretary, Board Secretary, so Mrs. Diesel will be helping me out. So we'll get through this together. The first item on this agenda after call to order is the approval of the agenda. Do I have someone to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda of the April 19th, 2022 reorganization meeting.
Second? Mr. Kerschner? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The next item on this agenda, and the last for, I believe, Mr. McDaniel and Mr. Rudolph. You ready for this? Okay. Is the certification of the municipal election results by the county clerk. This certification is specifically for the St. Genevieve R2 School Board. During the open session meeting, we will need to certify the results of Prop S G. So that's why you're going to see it twice. So do I have someone to make this motion?
It's on there.
You have to read them.
Motion certify?
The recommendation.
Motion certify for the official results of the April 15th election?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. So with that...
I think you should open the presents.
I think so too. We'll take a little break.
Let's get down to big stuff.
Take a break.
We'll make a motion to open the presents.
Yeah.
I'll circle that.
Be careful there. Think it'll bury.
While they dig in, I have...
You really want me to take this out, don't you?
That's up to you.
That's not fair. Alright, I'm gonna take this out. You ready? Let me stand up.
He needs some help.
You gotta help me put it back in there. Okay. Here we go. Ta-da! Oh, he can't see it. I gotta take it out.
There it is. There's a little plaque at the bottom of each.
Pardon me?
Has your name and your years of service.
I need some technical assistance here. Eric, no. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, every time you listen to that or see the time on there, you'll be thinking about that.
That's right. Says Richard Rudolph, "Sign your dedicated service, St. Genevieve R2 Board of Education." What's that? Another band play?
And what does yours say, Mr.?
Right, don't move back. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
And every time you listen to that or see the time on there, you'll be thinking about that.
That's right. Says Richard Rudolph, "Sign your dedicated service, St. Genevieve R2 Board of Education." What's that? Another band play?
I think it's a little bit. And what does yours say, Mr.?
Right, don't move back. Yeah. 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 Touchdown.
Is it 22?
Okay. Terry McDaniel, "Twenty-one years of dedicated service, St. Genevieve R2 Board of Education."
So I've also given them some cards from adults and, of course, their favorite people. There are some student cards in there too.
I thought it was a bill.
I can give you a bill too. But I did think it was cute. Some of them put Mr. Itchy Rudolph.
Yeah. I didn't want to say thank you to Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Rudolph for their years of service to our district and to the community. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve beside you. Mr. Rudolph has served nine years on the board. Mr. McDaniel has served 21 years. That's just on the board. Before that, he taught, was an administrator. They both spent countless hours supporting kids, teachers, and staff. I am very appreciative of all they've given from the bottom of my heart, so thank you both very much.
I'm just kind of did on that. Yes. I mean, everything.
And Mr. Mack asked earlier about the pension, and you'll have to check what the administrators said.
I just want to thank all you guys for putting up with me for nine years. And I appreciate that.
It was a pleasure, sir.
Now you get to think of all the fun times we had.
Yeah.
Okay.
With that, next.
Long story short, I was raised three blocks from where I was sitting. Double hill, yeah. Every once in a while, I had a bicycle, and every once in a while, I'd ride that bicycle to school. You know, back and forth, back and forth. Took a lot, a lot longer to get to school than it did on the way home.
Yeah, because you went uphill.
You live this close, you went here, graduated here, you worked here, you taught, you administered, you were supposed to. I was just referred to as Mr. St. Genevieve.
You've done it all. Remember Mr. Piggy?
Yes.
I did. I worked for him. Twenty cents a night, I emptied all the waste cans in the grade school. You know, on Saturday morning, I'd come up here, and on a good Saturday morning, I got a buck and a quarter for mowing the grass. It was really seventy-five cents. And he paid us out of his pocket, and they didn't make that much money. I cleaned twenty-seven Camo's on Saturday morning, too.
Hold on, Mr. Rudolph? I can't rewrap it for you, Terry. I mean...
You've got it out of you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for the mention.
Thank you.
Where'd you find the green ribbon?
I didn't keep that.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Alright. We need Jamie and Josh to come on up. Just where are you gonna sit?
I see Jamie got the book.
I did.
They both did. Oh, there's it. And Josh.
In two hours of time.
Yeah, it was a lie.
Oh, that's awesome.
Alright. So at this point, Mrs. Diesel, our Board Secretary, will administer the oath of office and oversee the swearing-in. So if Jamie and Josh, if you would stand up, I think you have a copy to kind of help you through. So I think she leaves, and you repeat after her.
Yes, Mr. Ricky. Yes. So after I say aye, you say aye and each of your full name. Aye.
Aye, Joshua Gettiger.
Aye, Jamie Baloo.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri...
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially discharge the duties...
And impartially discharge the duties...
Of school director in the St. Genevieve County R2 School District.
A school director in the St. Genevieve County R2 School District.
County of St. Genevieve...
County of St. Genevieve.
State of Missouri...
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
According to law.
According to law.
You may be seated.
Congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations and welcome. And here we go. Yeah. The next part of the reorganization meeting, I went ahead and I included some policies for the board members to review when they have a chance and for the public to see the information in the policy. The first policy is BBA, School Board Powers and Duties. The second policy, I'm actually going to have Mrs. Diesel read, and the board members sign a copy, a hard copy. This second policy is BBF, School Board Member Ethics. We keep a copy, we sign this every year at the reorganization meeting, and we keep a copy in district office, just as an assurance and an acknowledgement that you've received them and you know the information. So if you want to start reading, I'll pass out.
Okay. This is Policy BBF, School Board Member Ethics. Original adoption date was 9/20/2016. Members of the St. Genevieve County R2 School District Board of Education accept the responsibility to improve the public education in the St. Genevieve County R2 School District. To that end, all board members will remember first that the first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students attending public schools, obey the laws of Missouri and the United States, recognize that individual board members have no authority to speak or act for the board, work with other board members to establish effective board policies, delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent, encourage ongoing communications between board members and stakeholders, render all decisions based on the available facts and independent judgment rather than succumbing to the influence of individuals or special interest groups, make every effort to attend all board meetings, become informed concerning the issues to be considered at each meeting, improve boardmanship by studying educational issues and by participating in service programs and training, support the employment of staff members based on qualifications and not as a result of influence, maintain a process of regular and systemic assessment of the educational system in order to provide accountability for the school district, avoid conflicts of interest or the appearance thereof, refrain from using their board position for the benefit of any family members, business associates, or themselves, express opinions but once the board has acted, accept the will of the majority, remain from divulging confidential information presented during closed sessions except when required by law.
Okay. And then on the top copy that I gave you down at the bottom, there's a red signature line and date. If you would please sign that. And the date is 4/19/2022. I'll come around. And then there is a hard copy without a signature line for you.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And then the third policy in your board packet for review, and we're not going to read this one though, is Board Policy BCB, Board Officers, because the next part of our reorganization meeting is to elect officers for the board. So we'll move on to the election of officers. The first election we hope is for our board to do this. For their...
...nomination ceases, and we elect by acclamation Eric Bowser as Vice President of the St. Genevieve County R2 Board of Education.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations to Mr. Bowser.
Congratulations.
The next item, election of delegate for MSBA.
I'll make a motion to elect Martha Reesinger. I'll second that. And I'll make a motion to elect Martha Reesinger unless there are any other nominations. Motion to elect Martha Reesinger by acclamation as delegate for the Missouri School Board Association Delegate Assembly.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright. We are adjourned, and we'll move to the open session. I have 7/19, Mrs. Diesel. And now, Mr. Bova, you get to take...
You sure? You want me to make gavel? Alright, we'll call the open session to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. certified of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation and their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the election of the Board Vice President.
Make the motion to elect Eric... Don't you listen?
Okay. Nomination?
I'll make a motion that nomination ceases, and we elect by acclamation Eric Bowser as Vice President of the St. Genevieve County R2 Board of Education.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations to Mr. Bowser.
Congratulations.
The next item, election of delegate for MSBA.
I'll make a motion to elect Martha Reesinger. I'll second that. And I'll make a motion to elect Martha Reesinger unless there are any other nominations. Motion to elect Martha Reesinger by acclamation as delegate for the Missouri School Board Association Delegate Assembly.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Mrs. Reesinger. The next election is for the alternate delegate for MSBA.
I'd like to nominate Karen Bowser for the alternate delegate for the Missouri School Board Association for the MSBA delegates.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Second.
Okay. I need the motion to elect by acclamation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion to elect Karen Bowser by acclamation.
Okay. All those in favor of the election?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations to Mr. Bowser.
And this year it is...
Alright.
Oh, that's nice. Huh? Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I think that was the last item under the reorganization meeting. I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn a reorganization meeting.
Okay. I'll second it.
Move to the middle.
Mark the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright. We are adjourned, and we'll move to the open session. I have 7/19, Mrs. Diesel. And now, Mr. Bova, you get to take...
You sure? You want me to make gavel? Alright, we'll call the open session to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. certified of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation and their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a roll call. David Bova here, Eric Bowser, Geraldine Diesel...
Here.
James Kerschner...
Here.
Jamie Baloo...
Here.
Joshua Gettiger...
Here.
Martha Reesinger...
Here.
All accounted for. Next, we have our Board of Education norms. I'm sorry, but I'm probably gonna read them since it's the beginning of a new board. Board of Education norms are: Decision-making, focus on the best interests of students while ensuring that decisions are financially responsible, take into account current data, consider the impact on staff, and align with our mission of working together to create success at St. Gene R2 and beyond. Preparation and effective use of time, come prepared to Board of Education meetings by reading the board packets prior to Board of Education meetings, and proactively asking questions to allow time for answers to be collected or researched and then shared at the meeting. Cohesion, speak with one voice. After deliberation and consensus on a subject, move forward together as a collective board while supporting the decision in words and actions privately and publicly, and do not speak on behalf of the board without authorization from the board. Representation, act as ambassadors for the St. Genevieve R2 School District by consistently advocating for public education and staying up to date on happenings and initiatives within and around the district. And lastly, behavior and interactions, listen to understand and communicate to explain, respect the value, the diverse perspectives, opinions, and contributions of all district stakeholders, including fellow board members, students and their families, employees, patrons, and community members. Be open-minded and engage in active listening while being aware of nonverbal behaviors as well. Encourage open and honest communication on a consistent and continuous basis, and nurture a spirit of harmony, cooperation, and connectedness. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda of the April 19th, 2022 regular open session meeting.
Second. Jim or Josh?
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a new addition to the agenda. It's the MSBA April Board Report. We thought we'd add this. It's got some very good information from the state organization. Let's see.
You know my slide and update real quick.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report for the month of April. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the issue of teacher recruitment and retention in Missouri. As we have reported previously, school boards and administrators throughout the state continue to grapple with a teacher shortage that has reached a crisis level in our state. Too few young people are entering the teaching profession, and too many teachers are leaving the profession early in their careers. The State Board of Education has formed a Blue Ribbon Commission to address the problem, including the issue of teacher salaries in Missouri. The seventeen-member commission includes five business leaders. Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven says that's by design.
We know that we need to raise teacher salaries. We know that we need to work on some of the conditions, and we've put, to keep teachers' retention efforts, to keep them in our schools, and we've been outlining those. But we really need the business community to be the ones who are carrying that charge, or it looks self-serving. If we go over and say we need a teacher increase, it looks like we're trying to self-serve. This is an economic issue for this entire state, and if our business leaders can find and help find a dedicated funding source, we need their assistance in doing so.
Van Deven made her remarks during MSBA's recent legislative forum in Jefferson City. The goal of the commission is to develop a set of recommendations and clear action steps that address teacher recruitment and retention solutions. The MSBA Legislative Forum held last month included presentations on several legislative issues now before the Missouri General Assembly as it heads for its May adjournment. The event also included a student showcase at the Capitol, where students from school districts throughout the state were on hand to discuss and demonstrate innovative programs in their districts. Governor Parson was among those who visited with the students. MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall told school board members and administrators who visited the Capitol, "It's critical to tell the accurate story about the public schools of Missouri."
We've heard it said over and over and over again today, that is, that that is our primary responsibility right now, is to get our story told and to drown out the inaccurate information that's out there. Not let it divide us. This is a time we have to be united, and we have to be laser-focused on our children. They need us more now than ever, as they recover from the experiences they've had these past two years, too. And our teachers, we know they're hurting as well. Laser-focused on supporting great teachers in every classroom for every child.
Besides attending the student showcase, school board members and administrators had the opportunity to visit with their legislators at the Capitol during the legislative forum. If you were elected to your school board for the first time this month, welcome to school board service. Missouri law requires all school board members to receive eighteen and a half hours of training within their first twelve months of service. MSBA's CBM Essential Board Member Training fulfills this requirement and provides the foundation for becoming an effective school board member. The training is free for all new board members. Check the MSBA website for a schedule of the training opportunities along with registration information. Make your plans now to attend MSBA's Igniting Great Ideas Summit, June 11th and 12th in St. Charles. It's a great opportunity to participate in valuable leadership sessions and to connect with your colleagues from school districts throughout the state. Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Great Ideas Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. The nominating committee is proposing a slate of officers for consideration, including the offices of President-elect and Vice President. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I just want to point out that on the check register that we all just approved, there is a charge for $124,462, $462.85 to the St. Genevieve County Assessment Fund. That is reimbursement for legal bills in our battle with Lafarge Holson. So, just, we are doing our best to defend the school. I appreciate all that is being done by our fellow county partners. So we are helping with our portion of that legal bill. Next, we have guidelines for public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. Per Policy BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes, and no individual will be permitted to speak more than once. Each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I do not have any public comment cards.
I do not either.
Next, we have report of the superintendent.
Thank you. In your board packet, you do have a note of appreciation in there, so I wanted to make sure you saw that. The next item on my report is to talk about kindergarten. It says enrollment results. Typically, we look at the number of students that we screen during our registration. This year, at St. Gene Elementary, we screened sixty-eight, and at Bloomsdale, for Bloomsdale Elementary, we screened forty-nine. If you look in board docs at the attachment... Um, if you look, um, in board docs at the attachment, um, you will actually see projections, um, for our kindergarten next year. Um, at St. Gene Elementary with the registration, registrations that we have, the retentions that will probably take place, it looks like their kindergarten enrollment could be about ninety-three. Um, at Bloomsdale, looking at the same data, it looks like we could be at around fifty-eight. So, um, we're gonna keep an eye on the Bloomsdale number. Um, if that continues to grow, we may need to look at adding a kindergarten teacher. So, Mrs. Zuespin has already had those initial conversations with Dr. Taylor. So, we're gonna watch it and see what happens. Um, the next item on my report is to talk about the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, Paul, remind me, how many days do the seniors have left?
Twenty-one days. They put the countdown up today, so it's down in the hallway if you want to see it. The last day of school for all students, except for the seniors, so don't worry, Paul. All of the students, uh, in preschool through eleventh grade, their last day will be Friday, May twenty-seventh. That is an early-out day, so eight AM to one PM. Then our certified staff, we call it Teacher Work Day, uh, they come in on Tuesday, May thirty-first, um, basically get their classroom ready for summer cleaning, uh, put everything away, and then they go through a checkout process with their supervisor. So, um, their workday is on May thirty-first. My next item is to talk about some things in the high school coming up. So, Dr. Boyd, if you want to jump in, or if I have anything?
I've got it in my presentation.
Okay.
Does that work?
That works. So, he really makes the decisions and drives those buses, so I'll let him talk about it more. But this is the initial information. Um, I wanted to remind you that the, uh, retirement and recognition banquet, banquet will be on Friday, May thirteenth. Um, at the Elks Lodge, it starts at six PM. We are inviting all of our two thousand nineteen, twenty, two thousand twenty, twenty-one retirees to come and be recognized with our twenty-two retirees. Um, I don't think all of them are coming, but, you know, we're gonna work through the process and try to figure out how to, how to maybe shorten some of that part, because there are a lot of people. The next item, I'm gonna hand it over for the principals' reports. Did I see St. Gene Elementary's going first, or are you up, Lori?
No.
You just want me?
My tech is working.
You want me to advance? You want me to keep it?
Yes.
Okay. I will do that for you.
It works better.
Okay.
Okay, um, we've been extremely busy, and I had a hard time fitting into the five slides this month. Sometimes I don't have a problem filling five slides. Um, our positive office referrals, I have them on my phone, because I can't see that far. In the top left-hand corner is Addison Payne and Ellie Day, and then Tristan Stribling, Aubrey Hook, Christina Miles, and Landry Gegg. And on the bottom row is Kenley Anne Brawley, Tyler Lalamnedere, Kayden Marler, Savannah Johnson, Marcy Witte, and Crosby Woke. Um, the next one was our PTO, Me and My Gal Dodgeball, and then Me and My Guy Dance. We had sixty-five girls sign up for the dance and about forty-two boys sign up for Dodgeball. I think it was kind of hurt, because that was opening day of youth season, turkey season, so. But we had a good turnout, and it was nice to see all the families back in the building. We had just had our family fun night, and then the same week, we had the PTO event, so it was nice. It was almost like back to normal, so. Then you can go to the next slide. This was our family fun night. We had seventy-one families with two hundred and eighty-four people in attendance. It was a good turnout. Um, we had Rob Zolkowski come with his furs, and Andrea Fritch with her bees. And then we had, um, down in the corner, we had Dylan Friedmeyer, our music teacher, Dylan Friedmeyer, he did a drum line, and all the kids enjoyed that. It was all surrounded, um, around Earth Day. And then we fed the families, we had sandwich chips and drinks, and we waited on them. They just came in and sat down, and we waited on them, so they enjoyed that. It was not only good for our families, it was good for our teachers, because it was nice to see them talking about things other than school. They were talking about their own lives, so that was nice. We were all extremely happy the next day and tired. Okay, you can go to the next one. Since we are not connected to middle school or high school, we try to use our fifth-grade leaders a lot to help our kindergarten and first-grade kids that are struggling. So, for several months, they've been going to kindergarten classrooms at seven forty-five when the bell rings. These are kids that offered to do this. They don't, they go to their classroom, unpack real quick, and then they go to the kindergarten and first-grade classroom, and they help them on a specific skill, and it's made great differences in those kindergarten kids and first-grade kids, so we appreciate them. On the right-hand side, we had Jefferson R7 ask us about our really great reading program. So, they came down and observed kindergarten first and second grade with really great reading program, and they all enjoyed it. I think Tina Bosler's gonna buy that for next year, so. It's a very successful phonics program. We like it. This is just a hodgepodge of things. Uh, we did our kindergarten registration. I thought we had fifty-one students, but I may be wrong in there somewhere.
I think some of them were St. Gene Elementary, so what I did is I put them in my building when I.
Okay. But the fifty-eight was right, on the number that we both came up with for next year. That's the top two pictures. All the, we wanted to thank high school for sending the A-plus kids. They helped a lot. There were twelve, between twelve and fifteen kids, and they helped corral the little kids into the rooms that they needed to go to. They were a big help. Um, kindness leaders, we have been doing a kindness leader, or a kindness wig, so every Friday, we go to classrooms and we ask them, "Have people been nice to you? Have they showed you, um, appreciation? Has anyone, like, seen anybody bullying each other this week?" And our numbers keep going up, like, so, and we are noticing trends in classrooms with certain things, so it helps us identify those problems and go help solve them. So, that was one of our kindness leaders, uh, reading our numbers on the intercom that At the end of third quarter, all students who met their reading goal got to use the book vending machine. They get a gold coin to use for a book. We have class, uh, picture of all the classrooms, but I only put one up there. Um, and then the high school ag students came to talk to us about, um, corn, agriculture, and dairy farming, and the kids enjoyed that. They went to first and second grade. And then we have lots of upcoming events, like NWA testing, map testing, field trips, field day, and, but, important one I wanted to ask you about was the, uh, blood drive. That's April twenty-eighth from two to six. If you can come donate blood, please do that. And that's it for St., uh, for Bloomsdale Elementary.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, I'm not Mrs. Gegg, but I'll be stepping in for her tonight. So, this slide is all about some amazing student artists we have here. On the top left is Madeline Rusler. She won third place at the First Annual Altogether Art Show at Common Grounds. For this, students created artwork about inclusion. Madeline used the statement, "Spread kindness like leaves from a tree," to depict her ideas of inclusion. And then on the right there is Lily Roth. She's a third grader in Mrs. Applecizers' class, and she is a winner for the Jack and Jill magazine art contest, so her artwork will actually be on the inside of the back cover of the May-June issue of the Jack and Jill magazine. And then on the bottom left there, two SGE students, this is the Illustrating America Art Contest. They were recognized in that contest, which is open to students in grades K through eight. They're pictured with Lois Fleeg of the VFW Post 2210 Auxiliary. It's fifth grader Sydney Nessline, who received second place, and fourth grader Grace Lipp, who received first place. Both girls received a certificate and a check for their winnings. So, this slide is primarily about our robotics team here on the left side. We had fourth and fifth grade students that participated. On the top left there are our participants. In the front row is Tess Huffman, Mabry Jokers, Madeline Rusler, Taylor Elliott, Peyton Gegg, and Bailey Ram. In the back row is Coach Mrs. Johnna Beckett, Andrew Woodard, James Roth, Lydia Brown, Chase Gegg, Kendall Coleman, Coach Mrs. Andrea Fritch, and Coach Mrs. Crystal Kanig. Not pictured is Michael Leclerc. So, this group met once a week for two hours after school for several months. They learned to design and build their VEX IQ robots from scratch while learning teamwork, leadership, and problem-solving skills. In March, the team traveled to Park Hills for, and competed in a scrimmage with middle school students, so they were the only elementary students present for this. And despite the age difference, the St. Gen students did very well and earned an award for their performance there. The following week, the students put on an exhibition for students in grades three through five, and then that afternoon, the team invited their families to come in after school for a demonstration and an opportunity to explore and try out the robots. Uh, it's really been an awesome experience all around for all the students on the robotics team. And when the families came in, it was a lot of fun to watch the parents and younger siblings get involved with it. So, we also have our fourth-quarter habit leaders pictured here. Um, they, along with the third-quarter habit leaders, will be honored at the Habit Leader Ceremony on May second in the PAC. In the top center there is Tristan Matthews. He, um, is now in the Habit Leader Hall of Fame, which he received the status by getting his third Habit Leader nomination at St. Gen Elementary. We want to give a big shout-out to Sam and Mary Oberly, who continued to support our Habit Leader Program by donating time to take the trolleys out across the county. Um, it allows teachers and staff to make deliveries on the same evening and keeps the routes short by having two of them, and it's just an amazing, amazing time. It's really cool to get out to the far reaches of our community, too, and the kids just light up. Next slide. Here we have, on the top left, the second-grade musical ARF. So, here's something kind of crazy to think about here. Due to COVID-19, these students have never had the opportunity to have a live performance for their families. They're in second grade now, and this is their first one, 'cause school shut down in March, so they didn't get to do their kindergarten celebration. And then due to COVID protocols in first grade, we didn't have any open performances, so as second graders, this was their first opportunity here. Needless to say, it was a packed house, and everyone really seemed to enjoy it. It was great. On the bottom left there is the third-grade music performance, where the students used desk bells and did, uh, an assortment of pop and, uh, just songs that a lot of the students were familiar with. I don't know, if you click it, I linked a little audio file there. It's like a fifteen-second clip. Well, what's awesome about this is, like, it's the whole auditorium. This was our school performance, so it's five hundred kids singing along here. But what I really loved there, you know, as a former music teacher, you have this decor. I'm like, guys, you gotta be quiet during the performance, but this was like, now, everybody was into it, and that's why I took that clip. It was great. Uh, Mrs. Bowman, we want to give her a shout-out for all of her hard work and preparation. Um, all of her students just performed amazingly. And then, in the to, top center and top right here, uh, Mrs. Keeker's RTI group has been reading, writing, creating books about spiders, and as part of their studies, Mrs. Keeker invited Rob Zolkowski and, and his wife Kelly to teach students even more interesting facts about spiders. Mr. Zolkowski brought posters, specimens, and a live tarantula, which is pictured there, that only Mr., Mrs. Zolkowski, sorry, handled. Uh, it was a really awesome opportunity, and I actually linked one more audio clip there, because this kind of just demonstrates the joy of learning, if you want to hit that, too. It's not always quiet in the classroom. You just gotta hear it to believe it sometimes. It doesn't look awesome. And then on the bottom right there is the ag in the classroom, like Mrs. Zuespin showed, where FFA students from the high school came in, uh, for first and second grade students. The high school students taught the elementary students about dairy cows and corn. In May, first and second grade students will also get the opportunity to participate in the mini-fair put on by the FFA at the county fairgrounds, and the students look forward to that every year, definitely. And then the next slide, please. We have a lot of positive office referrals here, um, starting in the top row, Paisley Hook, Rosalyn Vineyard, Keaton James, Laney Cavi, Nora Roth, and Harley Courtway. In the middle row, three boys on one here, Bentley Rottler, Jackson DeBeau, Wyatt Burr, Liam Wilson, sorry, four boys, Cannon Kwan, Andy Naggar, Leila Schmidt, Chloe Yuck, and Tinsley Whitner, and on the bottom row, Callie Foff. And we have our featured teacher and superstaff for March. On the left is Bethany Ketting. Um, teacher said she's always helping whenever she can. She's a great resource, readily answers questions about 504s and IEPs, uh, knowledgeable at student modifications, helpful with care team, uh, always has a very positive outlook, and definitely keeps students' best interests at heart. She's a huge asset to our team. On the right is, is Liz Naggar. She's a para in the EC, and she is, in quotes, "A kick booty para." She has a can-do attitude, does whatever's needed for her students. She's open to new ideas, and is always trying new things, works hard to prepare activities for students, great multitasker, very kind and compassionate, shows patience and love for all her students, and is an excellent team player. And that is all for St. Gen Elementary. Thank you, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for the opportunity, as always. Um, let's start at the top left there. That is a shot of some of our kids actually square dancing, if you can believe it, in the school play that was put on just about a week and a half ago, uh, and that play was called Cactus Pass, and was directed by, uh, Mrs. Kime and Mrs. Bosler, and the students just did an outstanding job with that. I know some of you were there and got to be a part of that, probably one of my favorite shows from the last few years. Um, as you can tell, it was a big cast, a pretty neat set. It was a Western and a whodunit put together, uh, and they did an amazing job with that. So, hats off to those students and also to those teachers who worked on that, too. Along the bottom row, we had, just for the fun of it, and attached to nothing, a dress-up day where students got to dress like teachers, and teachers got to dress like students. Um, so as you can see there, at the bottom left, you have Mr. Mueller, wig and all, uh, dressed as young Miss Kreitler, and then in the next slide, uh, Mr. Samples and young Mr. Bennett, uh, dressed as each other. And then at the bottom in the center, that's a young Miss Fisher dressed as Miss Kime with a beautiful wig of her own. It, it was just something fun that we wanted to do. As I said, it wasn't attached to anything. It wasn't part of a Spirit Week. It wasn't a fundraiser. It was just a chance for us to let our hair down, or in some cases, put fake hair on, uh, and, and just have a good time, and they did an excellent job with that. On the far right, you have some snapshots from our third-quarter Wings Celebration, uh, which has been a big success this year, and I give a lot of credit to the teachers who helped us put that back in place after a little gap, uh, helped us refine it and make it into something that the kids really, really look forward to. So, good job to those teachers and to those students for qualifying. We have had our second ultimate dragon this year, Jacob Sulcer, and the official announcement is there on the left, um, but I also wanted to make sure you got a good look at him, so I put a better picture on the right. Um, if you'll remember, a student can qualify to be an ultimate dragon by earning three positive office referrals, or we call them Dragon on Fire. So, Jacob has been a Dragon on Fire three times this year, and his referrals have fallen into each of the three categories, family, tradition, and excellence. Um, so he is our second ultimate dragon this year, and Mrs. Huffman and I, when we, um, realized that he had achieved that goal, we had a choice to make about how to notify his parents, and so we just walked over to Elementary and, and told Mrs. Sulcer in person, and I think that was a special moment for her, and it felt good for us to be able to deliver that news, uh, in such a personal way as opposed to a letter or a phone call. So, that, that was a neat experience, and we're, we're definitely very proud of Jacob. The next slide, I'm not sure what happened, but I'm not gonna complain about it. We had so many positive office referrals, there was just no way to fit all of them onto one slide, so we made a little, uh, photo montage on the right, photo collage, I should say. Um, but, as you guys know, I'm gonna name all of these kids, because I think they deserve the recognition. Alyssa Beckerman, Miley Harmon, Jacob Sulcer, of course, Cece Mooney, Abby Woodard, Drew Roth, Brennan Mitchum, Niva Clemmons, Emma Goodwin, Alex Thomas, Megan Keith, Dawson Witte, Gemma Overstreet, Wyatt Helm, Jackson Slate, Clara Carlson, Jace Amstler, Kiani Johnson, Lily Kay, McKenna Pollak, Noah Jordan, Carter Howell, Wyatt Everard, Kayden Solanchman, Camden Weiner, Cooper Asfarza, and Aleah Capps. So, hats off to those guys. That's a very big group for us, uh, in just a one-month period, and we're very proud of what they've done for us in the building. Our spotlight awards, I have two for you, because, uh, we hadn't decided in March, when you met last time, and Mrs. Huffman was covering for me that night. We hadn't yet decided March. So, March is Carla Bosler, and most of her recognition in March came So March is Carla Bosler, and most of her recognition in March came from that amazing job that she did on the Penny Wars. I know Mrs. Huffman shared with you her experience there and the huge total that she was able to put together for the Polar Plunge and for Special Olympics, and she earned a lot of recognition for that, but on top of that, she's just a great employee every day. She's a wonderful teacher, a great director, a great coach, and a valuable member of our team, so hats off to Mrs. Bosler. And then just last week, we named Becky Keim our April Spotlight Award winner. She's earned a lot of recognition lately for the Inclusive Art Show, but just like Carla, she's a great everyday employee, too. One of the things that I appreciate about Mrs. Keim is that she works in an area where some students don't feel a lot of success in an art class, and they feel like, I can't draw, or I can't shade, or I can't do this particular skill, and with Mrs. Keim, all she cares about is that you try. And so our students get to build a little bit of confidence, and in that confidence, start gaining the skills and the courage to try, and so I really appreciate that about Mrs. Keim, and that's always how I sell her course to people who are hesitant about getting into art. If you try with Mrs. Keim, you're going to do great. So hats off to both of those ladies. We appreciate them and congratulate them on their Spotlight Awards. What's ahead? Boy, there's a lot. I know that this slide presentation will be available to you. I'm not going to be embarrassed if you want to take a picture of that, if you want to jot down some of these dates, because it's a lot coming up over the next few weeks. Spring Band Concert coming up right away, that's on the 24th at 3:00, and then we immediately jump into MAP testing next week with ELA, NJHS Induction is also next week, and Administrative Professionals Day, where we're going to take some time to celebrate Mrs. Whipler, of course, and Miss Hook, and Miss Ice and Bison, the nurse's office, too. And then Teacher Appreciation Week kicks us off in May with MAP math testing, starting at the same time. We'll do our fourth-quarter Wings at that time, and we are bringing back the Spring Dance. Just like Nate said, some of our students have missed out on a few things over the last few years, and so they're excited, the teachers are willing, I'm contractually obligated, so we're going to have a dance, and it's going to be a good time. We are shooting, we're going to try to do something a little bit different. We're going to try a parking lot dance upstairs on the faculty lot with drop-offs here in the high school. The students go up there, so there's no interaction with cars at all up there, and we'll have lights and snacks and music all out on the parking lot. Something different, we thought we'd give it a try, and if it turns out the weather doesn't cooperate, the gym is right there. So just something fun we wanted to try. So the dance is coming back, and then shortly thereafter, eighth-grade celebration, and then the spring choir concert, also on the 12th. So that'll get us through until the next board meeting, and I'll give you a load more dates at that time, too. Thank you all very much.
Good evening, everyone. All right, the high school, extremely busy, much like the elementary and the middle school, tough to fit everything in on our slides this month, and actually I had to leave a few things out, so thank you for talking about Ag in the Classroom. I didn't get those pictures in there, so I appreciate that. Mrs. Fritchie Dunsey worked extremely hard going and participating in her Ag Consortium meeting and getting to listen to the way that the kids are getting into classrooms, and they've creatively, they started with their Ag in the Classroom and getting into, talking about the dairy, and now they're starting to introduce the corn aspect, and so it's been really interesting to see how that's evolved in the curriculum that the kids have built and how they're delivering that to the elementary. So we're extremely excited about that. Mrs. Fritchie Dunsey works extremely hard for us, both with her program, but also working on expanding that program and adding Mrs. Skalkowski to that as well. Picture over on the left-hand side, we actually took our seniors to the City Museum, and they got an opportunity to go on a senior trip this year. We tried to coordinate and work with Six Flags, they were closed. We tried to coordinate and look at a Cardinals baseball game. They weren't home at the time, actually, I don't even know that they were playing at that time, so we elected the senior class officers, got together and decided to go to the City Museum. I think there was a lot of reservation early on about the City Museum. This is going to be lame, we're old kids, this isn't going to be a lot of fun, and I think they went up there. You can see a lot of our senior baseball boys over on the left sliding down the slide. I think they just had a really good time being up there and getting out of their comfort zone and doing something a little different. Some of our foreign exchange students down on the bottom getting an opportunity to be in the aquarium, and just some really neat pictures that Mrs. Jury took an opportunity to shoot my way and for me to be able to see. So we were really excited for our seniors to be able to go on that senior trip. And then also back here, we had freshmen, sophomores, and juniors that were participating in our big testing day. I want to thank Dr. Taylor, Mr. Tooms, Mrs. Skalkowski, Mr. Draper for all the work that they put into that day being extremely, extremely successful. We were able to go through and test our English I, our English II, and then also we ACT-tested all of our juniors, which I think is a huge benefit to our juniors, is something that I'm extremely proud of. We are looking at tweaking that and doing that a little differently next year. We have some ideas for our juniors of some ways that we can still offer that ACT piece, but maybe offer something for our trade technical students that may not be as interested in going the college route. So Mr. Tooms and I have already started the discussions there and figuring out what we can continue to do to support our students that are going to college, but also figure out a way to offer some support to those trade and tech students as well. In the middle, as several of my colleagues have mentioned before, Mrs. Flee was in recognizing some of our students for their amazing artwork. Mrs. Bowman does just a fantastic job of supporting our students. Listening to her, I know that she comes in and dedicates a day a week, sometimes a couple days a week, and she's in here in the evenings from 6:00 to 9:00, just giving students in her advanced art classes a space to come in and work, and so just to see some of the things that they produce and the things that they come up with. Maggie Miracle won first place in the picture. I know it means a lot to her, that's actually a picture of her dad, and so she worked on that piece. Getting to see that, you know, the picture there really doesn't do it justice. Getting to see that picture live and in person was just absolutely, it's breathtaking. It's amazing the detail that she puts into it and just the great level of work. Hannah Woodruff over on her right would actually receive second place, and then Miranda Ponder over on the left received third place. So those three students, super talented, and just the work that they put in and provide day in and day out, just amazing. Down in the bottom middle, I just want to highlight our Smash Brothers winners from Mr. Diamond's Gaming Club. He's done a fantastic job this year of just getting that started and getting that going and just creating a lot of excitement for our students. The top-right picture, our students just got back, our choir students just got back from Florida, they had an opportunity to go down and perform down in Florida, and just for a lot of our kids, it's just an opportunity that they never may see, getting an opportunity to leave Missouri, get to go to Florida, get to go to Disney, just a magical experience for a lot of our students. So we're very, very blessed and very happy that they get an opportunity to fly down. I got to go on with the band group, and we had to ride a bus, so I told Mrs. Jury that I was jealous that she got to hop on a plane and fly down, so. But both of those two are pictures from there, so we're good.
I don't know, with the weather.
Yeah, the weather was a little crazy, but I still...
They didn't get on the plane until 11:00 p.m.
18-hour bus ride, 11:00 p.m. flight, I'd take the 11:00 p.m. flight. Our Elks Student of the Month, Casey Ayers, and our Rotary Student of the Month, Emma Beauchamp. Both of those two students are fantastic seniors for us and just wanted to make sure that they got some recognition. Positive office referrals, I actually got to make some phone calls today. Mr. Schnebel, our new assistant principal for next year, was actually in, working with me on some interviews for a couple of positions, and while we were here, I said, hey, do you want to do something fun today? And he said, yeah, of course, I want to do something fun today. So we made some phone calls to some parents, called some students in, and just got an opportunity to do some of those positive office referrals, so I want to make sure that I get an opportunity to recognize those students. Drake Dillinger, Levi Hook, Sophia Saletti, Dailen Roth, Molly Bell, Mason Rook, Jordan Ryering, Ricky Hunter, Hannah Naggar, and Justin Harris were our positive office referrals in the high school for this past month. FCC LA, extremely, extremely busy, and also extremely well-deserving. Mrs. or Dr. Ederson has worked extremely hard, Mrs. Stafford has worked extremely hard to get several of our students qualified for the national convention that's taking place out in San Diego this summer, so I want to recognize definitely those students. First and foremost, I think I recognized Drew Newman and Maria Kemper last month, but I also want to throw them in there again. They qualified along with Lana Kemper, Trey Bloom, J.C. Beckerman, Elena Schimmel, Sophie Deruse, and Emma Kay. They all earned gold ratings. Trey and J.C. were named as state winners for their events. Elena, Sophie, and Emma all placed second in their events. Trey, J.C., Elena, Sophie, and Emma all qualified for a national competition this summer, so just a lot of really amazing things going on for our FCC LA chapter. I know that Dr. Ederson's put a ton of work into not only the FCC LA chapter, but her work here, so we definitely want to highlight that, just the great work that she does for our students. And then down on the bottom right, we have Mrs. Bader and Mrs. Henderson, who took our FBLA students to the state's convention, and we had two students that placed in the top 10. Lily Lukin was seventh in spreadsheet applications, and Lily is typically very quiet, doesn't really say a whole lot, and I congratulated her today and actually got a few words out of her today, so I was pretty excited about that. And then Jaden Pullins was 10th in insurance risk management, and so we're very, very excited for the two of those students and Mrs. Bader, Mrs. Henderson. I know they had a really good trip, and talking to Mrs. Bader, she was just very, very excited to go, to spend the time with the students, and to see their successes. So in the MSBA presentation, they talked a lot about teacher retention, and one of the things that I'm extremely proud of is that we have an amazing cadet teaching program, and that started with Mr. Tooms and myself, kind of got the ball rolling with really big numbers. I know Dr. Mercer was a part of that. We ballooned when I was working with Mr. Tooms, we had like 70 kids in our cadet teaching program, and at that point, we realized that we really, truly weren't servicing our students the way that we really needed to. We were meeting with them once a month, and they were going out and they were spending time in classrooms, but we really weren't able to give them a very directed, concerted effort, and so this school year, we changed the schematic, and we now have a cadet teaching field experience class, and we have a classroom class. And so in the classroom, they're actually working with Dr. O'Brien and Mr. Tyson Roth, and in that classroom, they're working on things, they're discussing things such as classroom management, they're working through their logs, they're talking, they're bringing in guest speakers to come in and talk to them about education and getting them excited. I know Dr. Flee, Dr. Taylor, myself, several others have been in as speakers, just kind of talking about our roles and our jobs and what we do on the day-to-day, and just getting them interested and engaged in education. And so to see the evolution of the program has really been really, really neat. We then also send our students out, and they do the field experience portion, where they're pushing into elementary classrooms, middle school classrooms, and they're getting that real-world, that real teaching experience, so they're kind of getting the best of both worlds and still having that daily instruction from teachers. Dr. O'Brien and Mr. Roth continue to evolve that, so listening to their stories, and one of the things that we were able to change with that, since we have that during 7th hour now, that actual classroom piece, three days a week, they're actually pushing those students back into the classroom, but then they themselves are able to actually go and conduct evaluations on the students and their progress and how they're doing, so now they have an opportunity to be able to give feedback based on what they're actually seeing in the classroom. So that's been just really a game-changer for us and that program. And so with that being said, we took a group of students, Mr. Roth, myself, and Mr. Tooms, took a group of students down to CMO, and they had a CMO Future Teacher Day, and so we've been really trying to push and push and push, not only a partnership with CMO, but a partnership with schools and universities across the state, trying to get our students in that direction, trying to work on our Grow Your Own program here at St. John Eve High School, and this has been a big focus for us. CMO had a big event and a big day, and we had an opportunity to take students down there. They got an opportunity to walk through dorm rooms, they got an opportunity to sit in the cafeteria, but even more importantly, they got an opportunity to meet with the educational faculty and staff, so they were able to ask questions, figure out what a day in the life of a CMO college student that's in the field of education really looks like, and so I feel like that was extremely beneficial for our students and extremely beneficial for us as we continue to work on our Grow Your Own program here at the high school. One of the things that I'm extremely excited about, when we were at CMO, we were able to talk to one of their instructors and professors, and we're working with them right now and getting college credit offering for our students in our cadet teaching program. They were asking about what do we do, what offerings, what does the day look like, and so we were talking about our field experience, we were talking about our classroom structure, and they looked at us and they just kind of started laughing, and they go, and you don't offer this for college credit now? And we said, no, and we said, what would it take? And they said, you just need to get the instructor to email us an unofficial transcript, and we'll get you guys taken care of. So we're going to be able to offer that for our students next year, and we're extremely excited about that additional offering, and just seeing that continue to grow and continuing to grow our own students here, and hopefully they're able to spread their wings, go to college, and want to come back and be part of our district. Scholar Bowl, they are the conference champions and the district champions. They actually are participating tomorrow night in the sectional round, and so they are now in what they call the Round of Eight. If they win tomorrow night, it's a best-of-three, so they will go up against Sullivan. If they can win two of the three games tomorrow, near two of the three matches tomorrow evening, they will then be in the final four and will get an opportunity to travel and compete in the state tournament, will be guaranteed a state plaque at that point in time. So our students have worked extremely hard. Dr. Rook has worked extremely hard with a very small varsity group. We have very limited numbers at the varsity level, but they've really meshed and gelled together as a team this year, and at the right time are all coming together and performing very, very well. You can see the schools that they defeated, the Valley of Caledonia. I think that that's important to mention, because we lost to Valley of Caledonia twice during the regular season and came back and defeated them in the semifinals of the M-A A conference tournament, and then were able to beat North County as well. And then you can see, we defeated Park Hills twice in the district round, the district tournament, the first game was very close, and then that final game in districts was very close as well, so major kudos to Dr. Rook. Kaylee Forehand also earned district honors as well, so definitely want to give a shout-out to the both of them. Upcoming events. Dr. Flee had mentioned this a little while ago, so I definitely want to highlight several of our major upcoming events. The top left is the first item that we have coming up, which is prom, and that is this Saturday. Mr. Schwent and Mr. Kreitler have been working extremely hard with our junior class officers in getting preparations made for prom that will be out at the Elks Lodge. We are starting at 7:00, and it should run until about 10:00 with coronation at 9:00. So for those of you guys that can make it out to see our students and see them all dressed up, it's one of my favorite events all year. You get to see the students in a completely different light, getting to watch them come in and just be excited to participate, be part of prom. I think it's a rite of passage, and it's something that I'm very excited that we have that coming up this Saturday. The kids are getting an opportunity to participate in that, and they're just really excited about it, even more so this year, we've got dress-up days leading up to prom, and I mean, there's been a little bit of a fever pitch over this, and that's been a lot of fun and something a little different for us. Dan Clark Honors next week on Tuesday, so we have a very, very busy next couple of weeks. Next Tuesday, April 26th, I hope you guys can make that. We have a big night planned. I will tell you our guest speaker, I'm very, very excited to hear the message that this young lady is going to bring. She's very, very decorated and has a lot to offer and a lot to bring. I was reading through her bio that she emailed me today, and I just thought, oh my gosh, this is going to be incredible for our kids. She's done so many amazing things and is continuing to do so many amazing things, so I'm really excited for that. So if nothing else, come, enjoy seeing our kids get recognized, enjoy listening to our guest speaker coming in and talking about her experiences of being a graduate from here and going out and spreading her wings and coming back and wanting to give back and be part of that, so I encourage you guys to do that. Start time is 6:00, and that will be out in the Performing Arts Center. We are going to do that just as a ceremony. Our hopes are, the Elks have been amazing in the past to be allowing us to go to utilize their facility. Our hopes are that we can get back there, hopefully next school year is kind of what our intentions are. We were so far into the planning stages this year, to be able to go back and bring the Elks back in was going to be very, very difficult by the time that we felt like we were in a good place to be able to do the banquet side of things, so we're hopeful to be able to get back to that, hopefully next school year. And then the big event, graduation, Saturday, May 21st. That's an 8:00 start in the Peggy J. Johnson Memorial Gymnasium. We will be inside. The schematic will look very similar to what we had last year. I know that we changed things up a little bit with having the graduates out in front, getting the feedback from those kids, having them have the ability to actually watch the graduation ceremony instead of having to look at it from the side. We got a ton of amazing feedback from our kids, so we are looking at utilizing that same schematic again, that gives us a little bit more stage awareness and stage ability to be able to move some things around and do some different things, so that's kind of what our game plan is on that piece and kind of the layout and the schematic of graduation. So a lot of preparation. Mrs. Dallas has been working extremely hard. The ladies in the office have done amazing with all three of these events and just making sure that we have everything where they need to be and what's going on, so extremely excited for all three of those. If you guys can make it, I highly, highly encourage prom this weekend, Dan Clark Honors next Tuesday, and then we'll definitely see you all at graduation. Anybody have questions on those three? And then our April Teacher of the Month, Mr. Chris Thompson. And that's what everybody gets, we just get a chuckle whenever we say his name. He definitely keeps the mood very light, and that's something that I very, very much appreciate about Mr. Thompson, getting to work with him and track and just getting an opportunity to see the way that he interacts and engages with our students is just truly remarkable, but if you really read those words about what the nomination says about him this month, I think it truly embodies who he truly, genuinely is as a person. I know that a lot of times, words really do make a big impact, and I think that you can... uh, words really do make, make a big impact and, and I think that you can, you can read there balancing being a teacher, a coach, a dad. He's done amazing things, but I think the piece that really resonates with me the most is the bottom piece there where it says, this year he's really gotten me through so, so much and deserves to be the Teacher of the Month. Uh, the, the student definitely uh, talked a lot about how much they have overcome and how much he has been a big influence in helping them overcome what they have. And so I think that that piece is really neat. And then I also want to give a, a big shout out to Lindsay Crump for our April background. Uh, she ceases, never ceases to amaze me on what she does with that month in and month out. And so just that spring festive Easter look to it. Uh, and that's what we're pushing out to all of our students on their backgrounds on their computer. So that's all we have at the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is unfinished business. First item is the instructional program presentation, elementary art.
Yes, I'm excited.
Hi, I'm Christina Guilford and this is
My name's Haley Yuddington.
And we are the art teachers for the St. Genevieve School District and watch our video.
Good evening. This presentation is an overview of the art program at Bloomsdale Elementary and St. Genevieve Elementary. The elementary art program serves students in grades pre-K through fifth.
At SGE, I have 554 students. 16 students is my smallest class, which is a kindergarten class, and 25 students is my largest, which is a fifth grade class.
At Bloomsdale Elementary, I teach approximately 320 students. The smallest class size is 13 and the largest is 24. Mission statements help classrooms and educators clearly define goals and express what is truly important to them. My mission is to nurture creativity, advocate for those in need, and celebrate the uniqueness in others.
My mission is to give students the support and tools they need to continue to create indefinitely as lifelong learners. I will uphold a safe environment and encourage artistic expression to instill a love of creating as well as build confidence in their abilities.
Our art classrooms are structured to provide various levels of choice. At Bloomsdale Elementary, our art studio is a shared workspace for all students, grades pre-K through fifth. We are transitioning our program to Teaching for Artistic Behavior, or TAB for short. The TAB concept enables students to experience the work of the artist through authentic learning opportunities and responsive teaching. In the art studio, students are regarded as artists and the open environment offers them real choices for responding to their own ideas and interests through art making. Choice-based art education supports multiple modes of learning and assessment for the diverse needs of students.
In my classroom at SGE, I am project-based, which means students are assigned specific projects that focus on a skill, technique, or inspired artist. The projects vary on artistic choice based on the focus. So on the left here, I have the traditional, which is the least amount of choice. Um, usually it's because we're focused on a skill. In this case, it was a still life. So all the students are looking at the same still life and they perform the same skills. Um, but most of the time we're doing skill-based, which means I pick a skill. In this case, we were focusing on um, Kuna Culture's artwork, which is molas and then layering paper, but you could also focus on the color schemes or um, geometric versus organic shapes. And then they get to pick the content. Um, and then sometimes we do theme-based, which means I pick a theme such as illustrating America and they are able to choose the content and the materials they use to create the artwork.
The arts improve students' fine motor skills and enhances their creative problem-solving abilities. The following slides are lesson examples for drawing, collage, painting, and ceramics. In our art classrooms, students have a chance to explore creativity using a variety of art tools and mediums.
At SGE, I introduced Artsonia at the beginning of the year. It is an online portfolio for students. I upload student artwork to the website, their parents get an immediate alert through their email and they can see their child's artwork. This is the Artsonia stats. Up top, we have school activity. We have uploaded 2,854 artworks. Students have submitted 65 artist statements. We have 328 comments and 407 artist fans, which means parents or grandparents who have linked with their student on Artsonia. Student awards is for students who have posted a lot of artworks or get a lot of comments. And then fundraising, all of this money raised goes straight to our art program. Uh, we raise money by the parents or grandparents, if someone in the family purchasing their student's artwork printed on something such as a shirt, a mask, a mug, canvas, or just a print. Uh, and then we get 20% of those funds. So so far, we have raised $205.46.
Art shows, contests, and in-school displays allow students the opportunity to share their creativity with our school and community. Displaying artwork gives young artists a sense of pride and accomplishment for their efforts. Bloomsdale and St. Genevieve Elementary hold art shows in May of each school year. Every young artist is encouraged to submit their favorite work to be displayed. At the in-person show, faculty, staff, students, and families are invited to vote on their favorite works. May 2020 was the first year we put on a virtual show. Students submitted artworks that were then photographed and uploaded to Art Steps. This is a web-based software that allows users to create virtual art museums and galleries within 3D spaces. Our schools participate annually in the Illustrating America contest.
These are some examples of how students portrayed America in their artwork. This year, we decided to do an art contest related to reading and literature. Students created a bookmark and the winners got theirs printed for everyone in the school to use.
At Bloomsdale Elementary, students in grades second through fifth participated in the contest. This year, four winners were selected. The winners were Claire Giesler, Sophia Crocker, Ben Plaidoff, and Rogan Zuspin.
At SGE, only fifth graders competed in the bookmark contest. This year, the winner is Camry Meyer. With her, I do believe something very magical can happen when you read a good book, bookmark.
Students also participated in the first annual altogether art show. This year's theme was inclusion. Students created artwork that communicates the importance of inclusivity in the world. This year's winners include Best in Show, Sophia Certain, fourth grader at Bloomsdale Elementary. First place, Journey Blankenship, fourth grader at Bloomsdale Elementary. And Madeline Bruce-Ler, fourth grader at St. Genevieve Elementary. Enjoy these upcoming slides showing art displays in our schools and young artists at work. Thank you for this opportunity to share our program and our amazing students.
Thank you.
Um, and we would also like to invite all the board members to come visit, but do be warned, if you do come to our art classroom, you will be put to work, right, Dr. Flee? She was slinging paint last week a little bit and
I was her aide in a kindergarten class. And it was okay. I got two great pictures out of it.
She didn't make a mess.
No, they did not.
But please come see us. Enjoy the fun.
Thank you. I would also love if you come see me and check out the Artsonia page. All you have to do is just type in our elementary school.
Thank you. Those are the best parts of the evening.
I don't know how to transition to summer school from now.
And next we have summer school.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, once again, we have worked with high school administration and high school teachers, uh, um, to come up with the summer school schedule. Um, our current schedule, uh, must have 60 hours in each semester. So the first semester will, will go from June 1st to June 17th and second semester will go from June 20th to July 7th. Uh, we will cover Algebra I, Applied Math I and II, English I through IV. Uh, and this year, we are trying something out at the high school. We thought it would be a good idea to uh, try to allow some students to gain credit in personal finance. Um, so we're offering a personal finance course this summer for interested students and I think they're really promoting that strongly at the high school. See, um, if we can get some of those students to gain that credit so that it opens up some space for them in their schedule during the school year. So I would ask that you would approve, uh, the summer school schedule. It depends on the semester. Um, I was doing a little work today. Desi released, um, a grant for summer school and I was trying to look at last year's numbers. Um, we have roughly about 50, 45 to 50 students each, uh, summer. But that being said, some participate in first semester because they need that credit and some participate in second semester because they need that portion of the credit. Some participate in both. So it's kind of hard to split it out and, and look at it just on a per student basis. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 45 to 50.
What grade is personal finance typically taken in?
Sophomores this year. We're going to offer it this summer to any incoming sophomore, so anybody who's finished their freshman year.
Can I take it?
Is it half a credit or a whole credit?
Half credit.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 summer school.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the certification of the municipal election results by County Clerk Prop SG.
Yes, um, just as we certified the election results in a reorganization meeting, um, we need to certify them for Prop SG. And I need to get the minutes of this board meeting and the agenda to LJ Hart and Company as they start working on the bonds.
I have a motion to certify the official results of the general municipal election policy in the county of Everfair 2022. For Prop SG to declare the bond issue a success with 1,725 yes votes and 721 no votes.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I just want to point out that there was a 20% turnout in this election. I pulled the, uh, 2015, uh, it was Proposition 1, I believe we caught it when we did the the ball fields and the other expansion. It was a 13.2% turnout that year. So it was a really strong turnout. I know the board is very appreciative of the community's support on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Methano.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have new business. First item is the extension of the pupil transportation agreement.
Yes, um, our current agreement with Fowler Bus expires on June 30th. There is a clause in that agreement that allows us to come to a mutual agreement and agree to extend our agreement. So we use that clause, uh, to stay with Fowler. Um, and over the past three, four months, Dr. Taylor and I worked with Fowler, uh, and brought the board information, um, as we worked through the information, but we have come to an agreement on a five-year contract. It begins July 1, uh, 2022 and I believe runs through June 30th, uh, 2027. Fowler Bus has served this school district for a very long time. I don't know the date, um, but we've always worked with them. They hire local bus drivers. So we would like to, uh, propose that we extend the agreement and continue working with them.
I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the pupil transportation agreement with Fowler Bus.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the addition of a special education teacher.
Yes, um, the, actually the next two items are addition of staff. Um, our students, especially at the elementary, we're just seeing more and more needs, um, in our special education. And then the next one is a speech language pathologist. Um, I don't think most people understand the impact that the COVID-19 pandemic has had on our children as a whole, whether they were elementary, middle school, high school, or early childhood. Um, so we know coming from our early childhood special education program, we have five, is that right? Six, six students coming into kindergarten, uh, who are going to probably be, need to have more specialized instruction and, and probably won't be able to function in a full-time kindergarten classroom. Um, our current, um, what functional, what's, what's the word? What do we call? Yeah, self-contained, but there's another word. Um, we have one classroom like that at St. Genevieve Elementary where they're pretty much self-contained. Some kids push out, but you know, the support there is more extensive than any other classroom. Um, with these six kids coming in, we know that puts our current teacher way over, um, her caseload and that it will be a lot for her and the parents in her classroom to manage. So uh, we are recommending that we add this special education teacher to manage some of those self-contained kids and take some of that caseload. And the funds, it's in the proposal, the funds to pay for it will be state money, state special ed.
I make a motion to approve the addition of a special education teacher and changing of elementary for the 2022, 2023 school year.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the addition of a speech language pathologist.
Yes, we currently have three speech language pathologist, pathologist. Um, we, with this proposal, we would propose that we leave Lindsay Anderson, who currently serves Bloomsdale Elementary and comes on to the St. Gen campus to assist with the caseloads here. Um, we are proposing that we leave Lindsay at Bloomsdale Elementary full-time. Um, she would be able to assist in the RTI process and some of the other services that she really can't get to now because of, you know, the travel time and everything she's doing. Uh, the addition of this, we call them SLP, uh, would assist, um, the current SLP serving St. Gen Elementary and other students on this campus. Um, her caseload is quite big and it would take all of their caseloads down, but we also know that we have more and more students coming to us with, uh, speech language needs. Did I miss anything, Dr. Green? And then the, uh, funding for this position, uh, special education state funds. We would also look at recouping some of the costs through Medicaid and, uh, our high needs funds, which are state and federal. So
Can you clarify that? You said we have three currently?
Yes, we have
We're going from three to four or from?
We're going from three to four. We have Jody Naggar, and I'm looking at Teresa to make sure I get this right. Um, Jody Naggar, who serves our early childhood special education students. Uh, is it Ashley Regelsberger, who is on the St. Gen campus, and then Lindsay Anderson at Bloomsdale. Bloomsdale? So this would be adding a fourth one.
I make a motion to approve the addition of a speech-language pathologist for the district for the 2022, 23 school year.
Take your choice.
Josh.
It was Jamie.
Oh, it was Jamie. Okay, so, excuse me.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the adjournment to closed session.
Here we go. I cannot read it with the fluency or speed that Mr. McDaniel did, but I will try. Under revised Missouri Statute 610.021, I motion that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following terms, items of business. Hiring, firing, disciplining, and promoting of particular employees. Scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals. Preparation including any discussions or work product on behalf of a public governmental body or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups and individually identifiable personnel records, permanent performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. Except that this exemption shall not apply to the names, positions, salaries, and lengths of services of officers and employees of public agencies once they are employed such and the names of private sources donating or contributing money to the salary of a chancellor or president at all public colleges and universities in the state of Missouri and the amount of money contributed by the source. Roll call vote, right? Okay. Hang on a minute. Okay. David Bopa?
Yes.
Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Carolyn Diesel? James Kirchner? Jamie Ballou?
Yeah.
Josh Gettinger?
Yes.
Martha Reesinger? All right, 7-0, motion carries.